I'd like to call a meeting to order of the Mandan Public School District. Today is Monday, March 6, 5:30 PM. We're in the Bosch Fairlick Room at City Hall. Approval of agenda. We have additions or changes to the agenda?
We do, and you have a hard copy in front of you under new business, letter C, approval of teacher contracts. We have, in addition to the three on the agenda that was posted last week, we have six new names, and you have the hire sheets in front of you. We could talk more about it, but I'd like to have nine contracts there when we get to that point, if we can.
Okay. Any questions on that? Otherwise, what are the wishes of the board?
Move to approve the agenda.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion by Ms. Cosidget, seconded by Ms. Hubestall. And then questions? Otherwise, Ms. Ova, please call roll.
Yes.
Peters?
Yes.
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 Yes. Public communication. Anybody in the audience wishing to speak to anything? Seeing no one, move on to administrators' report. Mr. Legasi?
Yeah, I'd like to introduce Andrew Stromi, the Mandan City Planner. Andrew is here to discuss the placemaking grant for the high school site. He has taken the lead on that grant, and he's here to discuss how that process is going to play out.
Welcome, Andrew.
Wonderful. Thank you, Ryan. Before I dive into everything, I just wanted to extend gratitude from the city. You guys provided a letter of support with our grant application in July. We were, of course, successful, so if you haven't heard it, thank you for the letter of support.
Do you have part about these projects?
Yes. You should have an update that was put together related to this project. I did also, while I had the podium, want to thank your administrative team for all the help that you guys have been getting us to where we are. So, thank you. Of course, the high school placemaking study is kind of a once-in-a-lifetime sort of opportunity to have funds made available for a community to work through a large redevelopment like this. In 2022, the State Commerce Department made us aware of this planning program where they made a million dollars available to North Dakota cities to come up with a plan for a place that could either be redeveloped or could be utilized more. In this case, of course, with the high school, under construction, we knew that we, at some point, would have to work through the hurdle of what do we do with this property, what is their market demand for, what is their community support for. So, that leads us to the planning study. I wanted to direct your attention to the screen where a project website's been developed. In all the communication that's been going out to folks, whether it's on social or in the mail, or in the Mandan Messenger even, there's been a link to this website, and there's a short link provided as well in the handout that you received. On this website, folks can come here and get an overview of the project. I won't read through that for you, but in general, we'll be going into a four-step process to figure out what there is support for in Mandan and in our metro area, for what places could become out of this property should a real estate developer choose to implement this plan. So, there's some background for folks who may be unfamiliar with what your board has done over the past few years in terms of securing funds for new schools in the community, including a rendering of the new facility, and that goes into how the project is funded and how it aligns with the state's Main Street Initiative, which granted us the funds. Of course, the project partners, the steering committee consists of folks from the city of Mandan, the school district, and the park district, and then a few community groups as well. We have the fortunate opportunity to have one of your high school students participating in this study, who's been providing all sorts of great feedback and kind of is a great sounding board for some of us who are getting a little bit older as we go into this stuff, what we have to ask, what the young folks like. So, we have four phases, and the first phase is underway right now, and that's just the basic facility assessment. A lot of that work is already done. The contractor, I should step back a little bit, we're working with Stan Tech and Icon Architects. Stan Tech, their office is on Collins in Maine, and Icon's office is on Second in Maine, so we're really fortunate that they're both in our community to help us through this. Stan Tech also has a grant with the city that is tailored specifically to redevelopment, and Icon is, of course, who you've worked with on a lot of facilities, so they're very familiar with that building and that property. So, they're finding things. Where's the sewer at? How wide is it? What could be done with that right now? And we're going to be going into our first big public engagement here pretty soon. That's going to be on March 28, 6:00 to 8:00 PM at Mandan High School. Everyone in the community is welcome to be there. There won't be any flashy renderings to look at. It'll mostly be pictures of the building and the site as it is today because there aren't any ideas that are kind of, you know, we've shared ideas that we have as staff, of course, but nothing has been really vetted yet until we have that first public input meeting to see what the community wants us to run with. That'll get us right into Phase Two, which is that exploring the possibilities, market analysis phase. After that, we'll go into drawing some of this stuff out after we've presented to the community and to some of the stakeholders what the market demand is for some of these crazy ideas. We'll get to pick which of those we want drawn out. So, if it's something surrounded more around multifamily residential, or if it's around commercial, they'll run with those ideas and get you a drawing that can generate some excitement. And then the last phase will go into a funding matrix for this, for what different types of resources are available for that future real estate developer to implement whatever the plan is. The schedule's on your screen now. Of course, this will all be wrapped up by August. It's going to be a very accelerated timeline, but over the course of the summer, we hope to have some public engagement opportunities. Maybe it'll be at one of the high school activities, if it's an arts or athletic event. We'll also be at one of the community events this summer. We're targeting the Buggies and Blues or Fourth of July festivities to get really out in the public, get in the way and hear people's ideas. We don't want the public engagement for this one to seem like it was a checkbox. We want to be really intentional to talk about the memories that people have on that property and how that might translate into redevelopment action. So, just closing it off with that, reemphasizing that that public input session's coming up on the 28th. We'll have that at the high school, of course, and that's 6:00 to 8:00 PM. You may hear, for the time being, that stakeholder interviews are going, are underway, so that's something that community members should expect if they have a stake in this property, to be tapped for a one-on-one conversation with them and the project team. We'll also be working on the market analysis piece kicking off right now, too. So, those are some of the activities that the project team's working on, of course, as we get this ready to hand off to someone to implement in the future. I just wanted to take some time to put a face to a name and detail the project a little bit more. I'm here for any questions, if you have them. Thank you.
Okay. Any questions for Andrew? Okay. Thank you, Andrew. Next up, we have elementary staffing for 23-24. Dr. Bits?
Correct. We are, as you know, we're opening up Lakewood Elementary next August. As part of that, you adopted new boundaries in early February. We opened up kindergarten registration. We sent out a letter to all students who will be reassigned to a new boundary, who, in other words, attend school, will attend school in a new school next year. As part of that letter, we told them that if they wanted to request a transfer to stay where they are or to go to a different school, that was due today. I think we've gotten, I guess I didn't get a count from Kerry, but over 20 of those requests, and we'll go through and get back to those parents and give them an answer. Hopefully, we're able to accommodate most of those parents so they could attend the school they want. We also, as part of that, have to hire a new principal at Fort Lincoln. We reassigned Mr. Langang out there, and then we sent a survey out to all of our staff, elementary staff and middle school staff who are able to work in the elementary, and asked them that, told them that if you want to stay where you are at, you don't have to do anything, but if you'd like a new assignment next year, a new location, a new assignment. We had them complete a form, and I think about 35 people have completed that form. So, now we need to get together with our elementary administrative team and try to put that puzzle together. We want to, hopefully, we can give everybody their first choice, if that's available, but we want to put together a staff at Lakewood that has 20-year-olds, 30-year-olds, 40-year-olds, 50-year-olds. It's just a nice mix, and we'll try to get that. Our goal is to have an answer out to our staff. According to the timeline, we send out by May 1, and it'll be before that, but we want to give ourselves some time. We have to put counselors down there, librarians, music teachers, PE teachers, teaching staff. Then we also have to do our custodians, our administrative assistants, and we have to get that all in place. I just want to let you know that we're well on our way to getting that done, and hopefully, that turns out okay. And if you have any questions about the process, I could try to answer them.
I'm assuming this process is similar as we did for Red Trail?
Exactly like we did for Red Trail. That worked fairly well in my eyes, so we're using the same process we used then.
Any questions on that? Otherwise, open administrative positions?
Correct. We have two administrative positions that are open. We have a middle school principal. Mr. Langang moved to Fort Lincoln. We currently have 20 applicants in that pool. Mr. Fostat has helped put together a team so that the middle school is represented, both teaching staff from each of the three grade levels, from the electives, and classified staff from up there are all on his committee. Mr. Peters has agreed to sit on that interview committee from the board, and I think we're looking at sometime the week of the 21st and 23rd of March to do interviews. So, if you have any questions on that, we can answer that. And also, with Dr. Fostat leaving us, moving across the river to Bismarck, we have opened up our assistant superintendent position. I visited with Mr. Wolf a little bit about that and how he wants that to look. He, again, would like us to put an interview team together. He would like some board members on that. Mr. Hogan has already said he would be part of that. I don't know if any of you are interested, but if you are, let us know, and we will put you on that committee. We'll, again, try to have teachers, classified staff, and just a good representation on that committee. And as of right now, we have five applicants in that pool, and that will close the end of next week as well. Or we, and if we want to, we could extend it if we don't. But I can answer any questions you have on that.
How many of the 20 do you plan to interview for the principal?
All 20. No. No, we actually haven't started the review process. It's still open for another week. I don't know that we have a set number. We want to make it manageable, but at the same time, if...
Sure. Okay, thank you.
Wherever the clear cut is, I think.
Any other questions? Okay. Next item, consent agenda. Under the consent agenda, we have approved previous board minutes from the February 21, 2023, and approved the January 2023 bills. What are the wishes?
I would move to approve the consent agenda. What was the board minutes and the bills?
Okay, we have a motion by Mr. Peters, seconded by Ms. First. Any questions, comments? Ms. Ova, please call roll.
Yes.
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 Yes. Yes. On your unfinished business, we don't have anything, so we went on under new business, review and consider approval of the superintendent's formative evaluation.
Correct, and that's in your packet. Mr. Wolf met with me, and we went through it, and I thank you for the feedback that you gave me.
Any comments, questions on that? And we have to approve that?
We do.
Yep.
I move to approve the former formative evaluation for Dr. Bits.
I'll second that.
Okay, we have a motion by Ms. Cosidget, seconded by Mr. Peters. Ms. Ova, please call roll.
Yes.
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 Yes. Next item, review and consider approval of open enrollment applications for the 23-24 school year. Looks like we have quite a few in the stack here.
I believe there's 16, if I count it correctly. You'll notice that throughout the year, we have, we deal with open enrollment applications, maybe not every meeting, but almost every meeting, that are extending a deadline, requesting a deadline waiver. In other words, they moved, and they want to stay in Mandan, so they file an application. These applications, these 16, are for students who want to attend school beginning next August. Some of them are on a tuition agreement right now, or they're leaving right now, but these are all for next August. And by law, because we participate in open enrollment, you have to accept them all.
Does our boundaries affect where they go?
We get to choose where they go. Obviously, if they're a middle school and a high school, they only get one choice. As we do, once we know our class sizes, then I can, our elementary students can be, if they're already in a building, we're probably going to, we will keep them in that building, but if they're new to our district, we will assign them where they best fit.
Okay, thank you.
So, of those 16, how many are currently attending Mandan schools?
I did not count, but I would guess 10. I would, most of them.
Most of them are just...
Yeah.
Any other questions? What are the wishes?
I would move to approve the open enrollment applications.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion by Mr. Peters, seconded by Ms. Hubestall, to approve the open enrollment applications for the 23-24 school year.
Yes.
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 Peters? Yes.
Yes. Next item, review and consider approval of the following teaching contracts. And this is where we added the additional six people.
Correct, and you have the hire sheets in front of you. These are, a few of these, I think, three of these are new positions with the opening of Lakewood. The balance of them are, and the elementary principals got together, I believe, six of the seven were able to participate in the hiring. We didn't, they're hired because we're opening Lakewood. They weren't assigned to Lakewood necessarily, so they may be, as we go into that mix of trying to honor people's requests, they may be at an existing school. A couple of the English hires, if you skip down one, we have two more English resignations, so we filled those from that same pool. I don't know if you have any questions on these. I can try to answer any of them, but...
What are the wishes of the board?
I would move to approve the, these teaching contracts, 2023-24.
Second.
We have a motion by Mr. Peters, seconded by Ms. Ucard, to approve the teaching contracts. Ms. Ova, please call roll.
Yes.
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 Peters?
Yes.
She's right.
Yes.
Yes.
Yes. Letter D, review and consider approval of the following letters of resignation. We have Kathleen Mock, English at the Mandan High School, and Caitlin Breidenbach, English at the Mandan High School.
Correct. We would like you to, or we recommend that you accept both these letters of resignation and thank them for their service to Mandan High School.
Any questions? What are the wishes?
I'll move to approve the letters of resignation.
I'll second.
Okay, we got a motion by Ms. Hubestall, seconded by Mr. Peters. I guess I'd like to just thank the two teachers there for their years of service to Mandan High School, or Mandan Schools, and wish them luck in their future endeavors. Ms. Ova, please call roll.
Yes.
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 Yes. Next one, review and consider the first reading of following policies.
All right, you ready? Your policy committee did a lot of work here last week when we got together, so you have a lot of policies in front of you, but we'll try to explain them best we can for you this evening. And I guess if you have any questions as we go through, we could stop at any time. I assume you'll do it in one motion. That's normally how the board's done it. So, BBBC, a board member professional development, the committee reviewed that. The only addition was I referenced the century code over what you had before. Good? Okay. BBD, Board Superintendent Relations. Really, your old policy was all the red, so we took out completely the old policy and replaced it with the majority of what North Coast School Board Association had in their draft policy. We kept the same descriptor codes, so it fit with us, but we just replaced the contents of the policy. Hey, thoughts on that one? Okay. BBE, School Attorney, really just bringing it to you as a new format. So, updated it to the format, no changes. BBF, Advisory Committees. We did make substantial changes on that one. A lot of this is really following your old policy, so not a lot of changes. You'll see, we took out some of the, the red edits are actually from your old policy, but the rest of the majority is there. We did some formatting changes just to clean it up, but we did add health insurance because that's now a standing committee for you. We took out the purpose statements behind each of those because we thought the strategies kind of changed on those committees over time, so the committee thought, we'll just remove that. We realphabetized those. I didn't really make that in green. I did realphabetize the committee names just to kind of fit logically, kind of made more sense. Committee members will serve, we had that in a different exhibit, and we had kind of two parts. You'll see in the, when we delete policies, we brought that over into the membership section and just added that into this policy. And then for the appointments, the committee thought we'd get rid of that section because a lot of those appointment outlines, like what's defined for MEA and administrative group, are really in their agreements. So, we're doing that by practice and their agreements. We don't need it in policy. So, any questions on that one? Okay. Next one, BCAA, Meetings of the Board. Again, your old policy was pretty much the red, and we took it all out, and we took the NDSBA policy. The only change on that was, NDSBA had a little bit different first sentence under regular meetings, and the committee thought we don't set it on the first Monday, third Monday of every month. We should just really say, it's set by you once a year. You set those every, your annual meeting, so let's just say you set them. So, if you change in the future, you don't have to change your policy. You just, you set those dates once a year, and tried to articulate that in the first sentence. Questions on that one? Okay. Public participation in board meetings, you already had, BCBA, didn't really change it very much. We took out some, changed some pronouns, changed chairman to chair, just for gender neutrality, and then added at the bottom of the first page, the furthermore, any individual who is persistently disruptive. That wasn't in your present policy, but was really the only thing missing from the template. It's really NDSBA's template, so the committee thought we'd add that back in, so we added that section back in, and then made some complimentary references to documents, so. Question on that one? Okay. Board meeting prep, because you guys are always prepared. I don't know why we need a policy for that, but board meeting prep, no changes, new format. Okay. BCBD is Board Meeting Agenda and Dissemination. Again, really was mostly your old policy. We just added a few items, kind of defining when the packet was put together. We thought that was good from NDSBA, saying that it's really not on a Thursday, instead of saying it's a Tuesday or Thursday. We just say five days before the meeting, whenever the meeting may fall. So, if you have a Thursday meeting, you just count backwards, and, you know, that makes it work a little better. And then, the board shall disseminate it as outlined by law. We were a little bit more prescriptive. We thought, we just follow the law. So, however we, you know, send it out and disseminate it, should follow the law. Any questions on that one? Okay. Minutes of the Board, BCBH, again, really just took the guts of your old policy out and replaced it with NDSBA. That's the green. And I think...
About that one, didn't we say we were going to update some of the language about videotape?
Oh, yeah. Audio or videotape.
But it's audio or video recordings, and then except in the case where, in case of executive sessions where tapes are required, where you'd say AV record or electronic record of some kind.
Where's that one? Mike?
I think, the way it should read, if, and Ms. Kazet, you can help me with that, but I think we said that the business manager may record meetings electronically, period, and the recordings shall be used for the purpose of ensuring accuracy of written minutes, period. Except in the case of executive sessions where recordings are required. The recordings will not be considered the official record of the meeting, and maybe, period. I think we don't have to say anything more than that, because Dakota Media Access has a record, but that's not our official minutes.
Okay, you're all right with those changes articulated. I'll go back to Dr. Bits, and we'll make sure to clean those up and bring it back to for second reading. And if it's all right, Ms. Kazet, I might send it to you to make sure to proof that, if that's all right. Okay?
Okay.
Okay. Any other changes with the other second paragraph or anything else? Okay. Executive Session, BCBK. Again, we had, really, the old policy was in red, and we took most of that out and replaced it with NDSBA. I guess, really, Dr. Bits, myself, Mr. Legacy, all liked the difference here, and also the complimentary document, which you'll see next, which is the exhibit, to kind of help with executive session, but really just took the NDSBA policy and put it in place of what we had before.
Same case in letter, or number five, where they have mention of audio or videotape, just to keep it clean with the electronically.
Okay. Yep. I'll fix that one, too. Thank you for the catch. Okay. All right. Any questions on that one? All right. BCBK-E, the exhibit for executive session, was really just, they had two examples. We really only thought this one fit. The second example dealt with student records. Didn't feel like that was as much of a help for board members in the future, but if you have an executive session, this gives you the outline as a chair on how to conduct that into the executive session and back out. Okay. Board Policy Development, the committee kind of just left that, Dr. Bits and myself, we left, because we were almost done with all these policies. We were really close. I guess I would, this is probably your first reading, policy members on this, too, how you felt about that as we tried to put that together and reframe that. Again, a lot of what we had was in red, and we just ended up removing that. The black text was also in our present policy, and then we replaced a little bit with green from NDSBA. Thoughts? Okay. One that was required from the last, the interim session, came the Critical Race Theory Bill and that legislation. Part of that was a requirement to have a policy as relates to Critical Race Theory. That's I double A E. And we have an example from school boards, and we just use that as a template for this. It's really exactly what we had from school boards, except for the complaint procedure. We really already had that in place. That statute asked that not only did you have to take, build a policy for every school district that outlined how we deal with Critical Race Theory, but also request to review materials, had to be part, was part of that legislation, that we already felt we had within our own framework already. And then if you had a complaint about that, how it was addressed, Mandan School Board's already done that. We provided those access for patrons that want to review our materials. We have nothing to hide, so really was just articulate that in this policy, and then also listing KNBA, KNBAR, and KNBAE, which, again, were already your present policies. Those are not new. Those are, we just reference those as the policies to point to if you were going to look at Critical Race Theory in our district. Thoughts? Questions on that? Okay. Once we, the board, or the committee looked at that one and reviewed it, they did go back to KN... to KNBA and thought we should make a couple edits just to clear it up, even though you've already approved that last year. I think you've already approved KNBA. KNBA, we added reference to I, the Critical Race Theory policy, so it's referenced inside your policy. And then KNBAR, the only, just looking at it, the committee thought they would like to add a couple things. First of all, the classified staff member on a review committee, if you were asked to review it, we just said if appropriate. We just thought some curricular areas probably didn't warrant a classified staff member. They wouldn't have any experience or aptitudes with some aspects of it. If it's appropriate, we'll add them. And then we added the two bullets on the second page. Those came right out of the exhibits from NDSBA. So we took those two examples and add them to what we already had in KNBAR.
And I want to add a comment to that, because it was our teacher, one of the teachers on our committee, who asked, you know, pointed out, we were ready to kind of move on, and said, well, I really kind of like this statement, and so we took his advice, and we found a good place for it in this rule.
That's all I have for new ones.
What are the wishes of the board?
I move to approve the first reading of the policies just reviewed by Dr. Fostat.
I would second that.
Okay, we got a motion by Ms. Kazijad, seconded by Mr. Peters. Can I be to read through all the policies?
We thought we'd tongue tie you tonight.
That's why Mr. Wolf was gone, so... Any questions, comments, other than, I guess, the two changes in those, those two policies, and everything else is the way they were, so...
Yep. I'll address those.
Ms. Ova, please call roll.
Schukard?
Yes.
Ferris?
Yes.
Hubestall?
Yes.
Zed?
Yes.
Peters?
Yes.
Horn? Yes. Next item, review and consider first reading of, to delete the following policies.
And as we reviewed that long list of policies, we did come with a few to get out of the book, as we added some to the book. Okay, so BBE, BBBE is board member compensation. We thought that's already outlined in law, so don't need the policy. BBF-R, that was a complimentary policy that we used. If you remember, when we added those, that paragraph back into the advisory committee, this was the extra that we're now getting rid of. Board policy adoption, BDC. You just approved the first reading on what was a two-pager on board policy adoption. This is what we're getting rid of. That was really all these. If you look at BDC and BDE, and we had another policy that dealt with board policy, so we end up squashing them all together into what you just approved, so... Actually, I missed that one in there. BDD, so all four of those, we squashed three into one.
Any questions? What are the wishes?
I'll move to delete the policies as listed.
I'll second.
Okay, we got a motion by Ms. Hubestall, seconded by Ms. Schukard, to delete the following policies. Ms. Ova, please call roll.
Zed?
Yes.
Ferris?
Yes.
Peters?
Yes.
Schukard?
Yes.
Yes.
Yes. Future meeting dates, we've got March 13th, Student Achievement, 5:00 p.m. at the Brave Center, and March 20th, Regular School Board Meeting, 5:30 at City Hall. Anything further from the board? Otherwise, this meeting is adjourned.